...council to order, six thirty P M August eighth. And copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the back wall of the council chambers. The roll call. Tyler.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Hey.
Here.
Jody.
Here.
Okay, he stands for the Fledge of Loom. Fledge of Loom.
您好，美国的联合国， 和我们国家， 一个国家， 自由正义公正的，
Okay, number two, approval of minutes from previous meeting.
Approval of minutes from previous meeting?
Okay.
Second. I'll say it.
All right, Meg.
Hi.
Jody.
Hi.
Green.
Hi.
Tyler. Okay, number three, claims of payroll. Questions?
Of course you should always see that, of course you know, you know. Too much, oh, is what it is, but I just gotta have the money to pay him.
Do you have any more questions for me to answer?
Okay. I will send you the hotel study down there and we, we're looking at it already, so we're already on board moving forward on that. The more show that, the more we're working. Awesome.
Okay, looking for a motion then to approve the claim of payroll. So move. Okay, second. Second. Tyler.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
May.
Number four, reports. Mayor, believe me.
Yep, we had our meeting on July twenty-sixth. A couple things that were in the packet there, coronavirus, still don't go up there at this time. But our government is now extending the expired, um, tests, so about that one, a billion of them. And they said they will be continuing to send us tests all the way through the end of the year. So if you need the test, let me know. Uh, employment positions, you'll see there's quite a long list there. Uh, still need C N As, we're looking at doing another C N A class. We need three candidates, or at least inquiring, if there's any more people out there that would like to take the C N A class. Um, we need a R M, we need an explorator, we need L T N for nights, and also medication needed for assistance of living. Uh, employee health insurance, we had Josh Schirr there presenting, and then Nancy Cook was on speakerphone, our current agent. The board did go into effective session for discussion of agents after they gave a nice presentation. And a change of agent has been done with Josh Schirr, uh, being our agent as of August fourth, I think, something like that. Um, we'll talk about the van later tonight, we'll talk about the board positions later yet tonight. I think I talked to you about the facility complaint survey at the last meeting, because it was not on the agenda yet, but I think I have been here. So, um, quality policy, the board wanted to look at the current quality pay policy. So, uh, we searched out to four different other facilities on how they pay their quality pay, because that was a question of concern in the resident, excuse me, this employee survey process. Uh, it was noted that we had the best policy compared to the other four facilities that we randomly selected. But the board has made a change in that policy. But now there's been a couple of other concerns brought to attention with our wage law that we want to check out before we make that into the process. So it is on the agenda to confirm, um, it could end up costing more. Overall, so we wanted to make sure the board is acknowledging what they, the motion that they made versus what, um, they want maybe. We just looked at a possible August meeting date change, uh, but we're not changing our date. And then I had added on the LETS audit, um, had come in, and that needed to be signed for the year. So that was done, um, they continue to go with LETS, they've been our audit process for many, many years, and they are a long-term care specialist. So, uh, that was approved.
We have, at least my packet has June stuff in it instead of July.
Or July meeting, but would have all June stuff, because it was always a month behind.
Although, Judy must know.
And then we're having a special meeting tomorrow night, which has been posted, just to talk about employee health insurance. What route we kind of want to go and things like that, the meeting's at four o'clock at the manor. That packet has been sent out to the city and things like that. It's just one agenda item, so I didn't get it to the board members, but they know it's tomorrow night, or afternoon. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. Loomy Chief, Chris.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Okay, so I never really thought I'd say this, but July was actually a slower month, I'm not going to say a slow month. It was a slower month, where it's kind of different busy than, uh, the prior, well, the prior year. Our numbers are kind of down, which is good. I think the busiest part of that month was, we were, Andrew and I were working on nuisances, and then the situation I had with the school. Kind of getting in contact with the emergency manager, that kind of thing, kind of putting things together as far as what our role is and something like that. Um, and Andrew and I put together this nice fancy little nuisance book, our nuisance properties. And we've got six properties on the list for abatement. The twentieth of this month for one property, and then the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth of August. So, um, it's working out pretty good, I think. We debatements and the, and still around with actually what the new ordinance, just being able to give them their nuisance paperwork. And now that people are aware that we're actually doing something about it, they're starting to clean up their properties a little bit more than what they normally did. Um, I guess that's really all I have. If you have any questions for me, let me know. I mean, we've got some stuff on the agenda that we'll discuss later on in some of the addresses, but I don't have. Oh, I will tell you, I, I had Andrew reach out to AAA, they were going to help us with the bike rodeo. Um, we're going to go ahead and move forward with that on, on August nineteenth, it's safety Saturday. They, on their website, they had a, a bike rodeo kit that they said was available to us. When I called AAA in Norfolk, they were not sure what, what I was talking about, so they gave us a point of contact. Andrew reached out to him, was that yesterday?
Yes.
Yesterday, sent an email. This individual responded back and said, well, actually, this, the bike rodeo kit that they have is typically for the northeastern states. However, he wants to meet with Andrew and they can put together something, a kit. And even if they don't have anything, they can tell us, you know, how to move forward with it. That way, every year we do this, we can just make it better. So the person's probably going to be, I don't know, we'll see how it goes. I don't know how successful we'll be, but if we get five kids out there, that's going to be awesome. So, it'll be at the library. And the more he works on it, I don't want to say I'm just putting it all, all off on him, but the more he gets it done, the more information I'll put out there, so.
Do you need any volunteers for us?
We're going to probably need eighteen, twenty volunteers, depending on how many kids you get. So, um, I know there'll be some high school kids that are going to need volunteer hours for their community service, so that would be perfect, I think. And then any adults that might not help, that's more than welcome to do, so.
Do we have a nuisance category on this though?
No, and I, we do not bring, and I'm glad you mentioned that, because I was thinking about updating that as I was putting my numbers in. I'm like, oh, I don't think I have nuisances, so. But I, you know, I don't, I, I don't think I'll need to add one, because I'll just bring this with me every, every month. You know, we.
Separate report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Fourth amendment. Okay. I just want to thank you and Andrew, Chris, and Jeremy for working the nuisance properties and the debatements.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Everything's going pretty smooth, so.
Went through town, I think it might have been last Sunday or day before, I can't, no, I was off yesterday, it was day before. I think I was off yesterday, anyway. Um, I went up every street, north, south, east, west, and it's actually looking the best I've seen it in a long time, so it's, it's working.
Yeah, I did my chance, looked at any of the ones that are.
In here.
Working now, have they done any work?
Yeah, we're not making much progress. I mean, we're just going to have.
We've got a couple of big ones.
There's two big ones, and then there's another one that's on North Elm, I believe it is, that we're probably going to have to bait. When it happens, we'll just, we'll be ready for it. Um, I don't mind, it, they, it's no secret, Barb Frederick's property, the van's not moved, and that's pretty much it. She's got, what's today, the date? Twelve days, there's no way that that's going to be completely cleaned. So we'll probably be abating that, that will happen the twenty-first of August. And then rat lifts. Um, they are due to be abated on the twenty-sixth. Let's see, Barb is going to be the twenty-first, it has to be cleaned by the twentieth. If it's not done by the twentieth, we will abate on the twenty-first. And then the rat lifts have till the twenty-sixth, that's when we'll abate them. Um, and then there's one on, I can't find it here. Oh, the Mary Ann Bean's property, one oh eight, I can't figure. South Elm, one minute. Sorry, guys. Is that, yeah, I'm going to wait, South Elm. They're just moving stuff around, so that one's probably going to be abated too, and they have till the twenty-seventh to get theirs completely done. Uh, Nancy Allen, I think she has until the twenty, she has till the twenty-second to get her stuff abated, so, or cleaned up before we abate. So, I see s- very little progress in some properties, like, uh, uh, Ray Winkles. Andrew went over there to serve the paperwork, and they had their yard completely picked up. They, I think they knew that it was coming, so I was completely happy with that. Um, so it's working. I mean, they know we're, we're serving letters and we're getting it cleaned up, so.
Awesome.
There's some new ones out there that I have, I got pictures of, I just haven't got the letters, but doesn't mean I'm not doing it. It's just, we've got a couple of big ones coming up, and I think we're going to have problems with a couple of them, so.
How tall can the grass be, or weeds?
Of twelve inches.
Yeah.
And Fred Davis is one of them, too.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that.
No, that one, we, I've got the pictures and we just haven't printed the letter, so, again, and his is going to be a nuisance as well, because all the stuff that's out front, so, I mean.
We already, we already have abated one property of weeds.
Oh, yeah, we did, we got that one done, yeah, so. Do you have one in mind, Julie, and I can go look at it, maybe I missed, because I will go take pictures.
Uh, behind our shop, I mean, that one never, that little section is not ours, and I, I don't know if it was maybe mowed this week, because I just mowed the other day.
Oliver, so.
Boxer thinks owns it or something like that.
No, she means from the south, it's.
Frank says another one I could just say.
Oh, okay. All right, yeah, we'll get it.
I would say it looks very good. I drove around a neighboring town today, quick wagon, and that didn't look good, so. Doing a very good job.
Thank you. Thanks, Andrew, appreciate it.
Keep it.
Couldn't do it without the help of you guys, so.
You guys are both in a great job.
Thank you. Oh, I've got a lot of cases on, on the docket tomorrow, so I'm going to be kind of non-existent in and out. So if you have any questions, please just send me a text. If it's something urgent, then I can get, directly get here, but I've got probably, oh, how do you know, a lot. So, I'll let you all know how the outcome is on that, I'm pretty excited. So, all right, you guys, anything?
Good, thank you. All right.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on to economic development, Susan.
Hello. All right, um, childcare, we have an upcoming C four K meeting, um, to discuss both the strategy. This is, uh, the countywide initiative, we have twenty-six court members, and I believe Plainview has ten of them. Um, so we'll be meeting is in, uh, late August or early September. Um, we are going to, uh, be defining our strategies for each of the communities, our goals. Um, we also received thirty thousand dollars that we can use for planning. And then I actually had the opportunity to speak with the Cedar County C four K last week. And what they told me is they received a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars in grants from C four K over the last few years. They didn't ask for it, C four K just gave it to them as part of their partnership. Um, and that was to increase capacity and quality of childcare across the region. They didn't really have any local providers that wanted to take advantage of it, so all of that money went to Cardinal Kids of Randolph. Um, and they boosted their numbers, so, um, and they used, you know, so basically a hundred one fifty-five thousand plus the thirty, um, to increase capacity there. So they started several years ago with five or ten kids, and I think they're over seventy now. So, I think our partnership with the C four K is going to be better than we thought it was, um, you know, beyond just the thirty thousand. Um, so we will be meeting for that. Um, you can be expecting a countywide childcare survey to come out probably late September, early October. Um, it is really important that everybody, when you see that come out, fill it out, even if you don't have kids. We want to hear from the grandparents, we want to hear from the citizens, and people that live in the community. We are really trying to gather that information, that data, that does support all of, um, the grant information and the need that we have from the state to make us eligible for some of those dollars. Um, and then the other thing is, um, Osmond, their daycare committee's been pretty active, we just had a meeting last night. And one of the, one of the, um, things that they pitched to the, to me, to bring to the rest of the communities is, what if we took the thirty thousand dollars and then any additional grant money that we get? And, because each of the communities and the counties trying to chase childcare, create daycare center. What if we pooled our money and we would have a hundred or a hundred fifty thousand dollars and we hired one director, um, to float between those childcare centers, those early childcare centers? Obviously, they would have their own employees, assistant directors, but to have that one central figure, would it help, um, make that happen here? So that was kind of an interesting pitch that's coming from Osmond, and they're, you know, kind of taking that to every other community, but I think that's a good idea. Um, that's free money that we don't have to really fundraise, so why not? Um, so we're looking at that, and then locally, um, our planning daycare committee, um, Jeremy is kind of our, our guy here. Um, he is going to be pulling that group together to discuss the floor plan, um, for the proposed childcare center that, you know, goes with the community building, but we're looking at maybe doing that first. Um, on the hotel study, Jeremy and I met with Sarah from H B S last Friday. Um, we had a really good discussion about the need for hotel, um, in the community, and then we took a site tour of three potential locations. So they're going to go and kind of compile some data, um, you know, we were talking to some area employers, and then we called Tyler in the middle of our meeting, and, um, we were just, they were trying to figure out, you know, how many employers do you have in the area that are bringing people to the community or need hotel nights and, and it's not available? How many of our people are staying in Norfolk, or our businesses have to have people staying in Norfolk? So their, their numbers are maybe a little bit inflated, we need to capture that market back for ourselves. So, um, they're going to be working on that for the next four weeks. And then again, at the end of four weeks, really, they're just going to determine, is it feasible here? If it's not feasible, the study stops and we don't go on to the next level. So, you know, we don't go to the full fourteen thousand, we'll just stop at the ten. Um, but I think, I think, I hope the results are pretty good, so we'll see what happens. Um, D T R projects in MEED, um, so we have lost our community planner for MEED, um, they have resigned. So we are working with some issues with MEED again, um, regarding our current D T R project, and then the proposed, uh, streetscape grant and the creative district grant. Um, so today, Ariel Larson reached out to me about the grant I'm working on for Osmond's D T R. And so I asked her, are you going to be working with us on Plainview, because we also have things in the pipe? And she wasn't told about Plainview, so she was going to get back to me, so I hope we find out soon. Uh, if she'll be our point of contact, but that really is going to limit our ability to do the streetscape grant that we were planning, and the creative district grant that we were planning for this, this fall, um, if we don't have support from MEED.
But, uh, I forget all the abbreviations and all that, weren't we going away from them, was that the one?
We wanted to, because we hadn't had the best experience.
Right, I, I thought we did, and I know it's going to come back, they're going to do better.
Yeah, we had, there was a meeting with the city in MEED a month ago, over a month ago, um, with the directors. And, you know, good karma's in court, you know, she was right, she had really pulled a lot of information about all of the issues, and put it very clear and concise. Um, we thought we had a really good meeting, and we were hoping that things would get better. Again, this is the second meeting we've had to have within a few years about the issues. Um, and then the result unfortunately seems to be that our planner has resigned, so. Um, now we're scrambling. Um, it's a big job, it's, you know, just the onboard of that position is at least a year, so it's going to be interesting for a while. We'll be trying to work through that, but we're going to try to hope, hope it doesn't slow us down. Um, the lucky thing with us in MEED is, is, you know, as a professional grant writer, I've written the majority of your grants, and they just insert the technical information, it's not like we need them to do the whole, um, thing for us. So hopefully that works in our favor again this time, and we are able to get something going at this fall and not have to wait till next year. And I'll let you know when I find out. Um, and then on round three of the D T R, we are trying to determine how much funding is left in the fund for round three. There were some projects that were previously approved in, in round two, and those businesses or building owners have backed away from those projects. Um, some of them just didn't have the funding to meet the match. Um, some of them just decided not to do the project at all, and then some of them, the state came back and had such high requirements that it just didn't, they just didn't want to deal with it, or they couldn't do what they envisioned, so they walked away from it. So, um, we got a figure back from MEED this week, but I don't think that that's the actual figure. So, um, as soon as I find out how much money we have, uh, we will pull L B eight forty together and talk about the deadline for those. And typically, we keep that application looking for sixty days. They have to get two bits from contractors, so that takes the most amount of time. We're probably looking at late, late fall, and so these would be early spring projects, and probably on the smaller side, um, you know, not the big twenty-five thousand dollar projects, but more of the five or ten thousand dollar projects. And then hopefully we expand it, we can close the grant out, so. Um, so on the, um, the streetscape and the creative district, I just spoke with Bob right before the meeting. Um, we need to put a committee together. The state forward to be a forty-five page worth book that provides guidance for that project. Um, so I asked if we could maybe utilize L B eight forty, since they are also the community development authority or agency. Um, if they would maybe be the, the, the group that makes the more sense to work on something like that. And I have talked to a couple of them, they were pretty excited about that, so. Uh, but then the other component of that is we need to partner with a nonprofit arts-based group. So we, we need to maybe partner with the Arts Council, um, to see if they would work with us on that. Um, so things that we'll be exploring is the landscaping, the tree canopy, curb bump outs, heating baskets, planters, murals, trash cans, wayfinding signs, safer crosswalks, a brightened downtown entrance, um, different signage. So, you know, we've kind of filled the buildings, we've brought the businesses in, and now we're fixing them up, and this is the last piece to kind of bring it all together. And, um, on the business side, the Watson Building has sold, it sold last Tuesday. Um, it will be a trucking company in the rear, and a golf cart sales in the front, and a golf pro shop as well in the front. And then the facts buildings are now for sale, um, they're available for twenty thousand on both buildings, and there's a couple of people that are kind of pending on that, if you are interested in the facts buildings, twenty thousand dollars takes them.
Okay, city superintendent, report.
Oh, yeah, you can read down there. Um, obviously, the biggest thing that's going on now is our fuel. We are struggling to figure out what the problem is, so we can't get the chlorine to test right, and we can't obviously open and tell that test right. Um, Kurt and I, we've been, and all the other guys have been working on it, putting extra chemicals in it. We actually drove to Pierce, got a test sample kit, see if ours wasn't working, drove to Osmond. Um, still nothing's worked, uh, we don't know what exactly is the problem, but we're struggling to figure it out. We've tried about everything, um, we're going to ask more people coming maybe tomorrow, try some different things, see if it's something, I don't know, so we're going to play it by ear.
Was that raining, or what?
Are we losing water yet?
We're still losing some water, um, but that's not the reason why the chlorine's not.
Okay.
I, well, we don't, we don't know if that's the reason, we don't, we don't believe that's the reason why, because we've been losing a little water still all year long.
Right.
Um, if you go down into the zero entry on the right side, the scene that was already filled, already blew back out.
Right.
So that means usually I talk to the investigators, they're going to be coming down too, it means that there's a leak in the return line, and that's why they push the scene up from the bottom up. But that's, that shouldn't affect why we're like, chlorine. So, we don't, we don't exactly know.
You guys just kept putting chlorine, they didn't even register it.
Yeah, Kurt, we were actually throwing buckets straight into, straight into the pool. Which you do when you shock it, like if there's ever an incident of fecal matter and like that, so, just to see if we can get the chlorine up there. For some reason, so we don't know if it's circulation, we don't know, we're not for sure. So, if anybody's a pool guru, we are more than welcoming anyone's help, so. Yeah, luckily, I guess we only, luckily, we can say that, we only have less than a week left of it to be open, or scheduled to be open, so unfortunately, it might not reopen, but we're still working on it, so hopefully it does.
The leak, I mean, are they going to stand by their work at all?
Uh, they're going to come back down. Um, that one, I would probably say not, because it wasn't their work, it was a leak in the return system, they believe, they pushed it up the backside.
But they didn't catch the chlorine?
They weren't, they.
Just happened.
Well, they're not in charge of that, they have a test that's sad, that's not part of the scene. But, uh, they said they would come back and see if they see the chlorine. So.
Are the workers getting notified adequately? Because I think all workers showed up today and didn't know that the pool was closed, including manager.
Well, the managers tested, so they're the ones who adequately tell us if it's open or not. So we don't know until they, they get there, do their, do the procedure, and then that's how they know if they allow kids in there, is they test it and operate like that, so. Like, so like, there's a monitor set inside that Kurt gets to look at, but it's not, they have to go by the physical hand monitor that the managers have to test, to tell if it's open or not.
Good thing you don't have to drive fifty miles, you know. I'd be mad then.
So, yeah, unfortunately, yeah, they, they show up and they honestly don't know, um, until, until they make that call, but. And sometimes it's a matter of when they.
I mean, I feel for those kids that had other jobs and they're losing hours, you know.
Yep.
Unfortunately.
I'm sure there's weeds or something at the park that can be pulled if those kids want hours, right?
If they want hours, yeah.
That'd be awesome, because we're down to one park kid, just.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just putting that out there, maybe if those kids want hours, they can pull weeds at the park, or there's somewhere that we can pull weeds around town that the city owns.
Yep, pull weeds, we could, if they're old enough, we can operate, so putting that, obviously, if they're under sixteen, they can, I mean.
Right.
We could definitely fulfill their time.
Just putting that out there, if they want hours and.
Well, if we have a problem, if we don't fix it tomorrow morning, we can definitely put that out there for the crew that's supposed to be working.
Yep.
So that's a good idea. It's a fantastic idea, actually. Write that down. Yeah.
Okay, city attorney, report.
I think we'll talk about other matters as we go through the agenda, so I'll just highlight two things that could yield incumbences. Um, the judgment that was approved to be paid off, uh, regarding, uh, foreclosure on that, um, South Elm Street property, uh, that was sent off to opposing counsel. It's my understanding that, uh, he's going to be signing a satisfaction of judgment, so then, uh, the city planning will no longer be a judgment debtor, so that's good. Um, and then the, the second part would be, uh, we'll be working, or I'll be working with, uh, uh, folks on getting those, uh, put into place, uh, regarding the D T R projects. So we just need to get some information, uh, from MEED regarding what those units look like, so I know, uh, what the underlying debt in this instance, so. Those are the two things for that.
Moving on to number five then. Mayor appointments, library board, replace Megan Porter, term ends June of twenty twenty-six. And I'm going to nominate Sarah Doty to replace Megan Porter. Sarah is here, she's back.
You want this job? Yeah.
Make a, make a motion to approve Sarah Doty.
Second.
I'll second.
Tyler.
Aye.
Green. Jody.
Aye.
Meg. Number seven, Sarah. I will tell you, the September meeting is moved to the fifth. So, um, does she need to give you emails or anything?
Uh, just give it to Donna, give it to Donna.
Could she have her emails just to be notified?
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thanks for coming, and thanks for all.
Thank you.
Okay, la, uh, manor board replaced Meg Anderson, term ends June of twenty twenty-four. And I would like to nominate Melissa Tar to take her position.
I'll make a motion to appoint Melissa Tar.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, Meg.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Congratulations, Melissa, thanks for coming. Manor board replaced Jenna Robinson, term ends June of twenty twenty-five. Okay, I would nominate Tracy Ober. And that, she will start in September, because Jenna's going to be there in August, so.
I'll make a motion to nom, to nominate, or, uh, to approve, and who'd you say?
Tracy.
Tracy Ober.
Yeah.
For the manor board.
I'll second.
Okay, Meg.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Number six, discussion action resolution number six seventy, municipal annual certification of program compliance, twenty twenty-three.
So this is the second step in order to get your highway allocation money. Um, it just says we follow the program guidelines for the state, um, for the highway allocation.
Pretty much.
Yep.
Do I have to pass it?
I would pass it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'll make a motion to pass, it was on six seventy.
I'll even second that.
All right.
All right.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Meg. Number seven, discussion action resolution number six seven-nine, installation child at play signs, ten hundred block of East Locust Street.
All right, so this is actually the block that, well, Cody Peterson lives on, and he's come forward, and he would like to know if we'd be willing to put signs up and right away and take care of them. Um, there's quite a few kids that live on the block, um, and it feels like it would help out with safety. If you have anything else, say you sure can.
There's, if you go eighteen and under, there's twenty-eight kids that live between on the south and north side of that street. You go, the ones that go back and forth, there's twenty-three of them, they go back and forth to play.
You gonna go up that kid's survey then?
Yes, I will.
Uh, I have no problem with it, but I don't own my streets.
So.
The street east, no.
You just some pretty boots.
You know where five where I live?
Yeah.
That's the street.
Oh, okay, sounds good.
I should.
I'd just be four blocks west of her. Okay, sounds good.
The street you go across, you see all these kids around, that's.
Yeah, that's the one.
Twenty-eight kids, can't miss it.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight kids, a couple dogs.
Yep.
Most of the time Tori's sitting out there watching them, so.
I, I ask one thing though, and I just ask that when they get old enough, that we teach, and not that you're not, but how to stop, look both ways and then cross.
Right, right.
We got little turds out there running around and they just, they just start, so.
And usually they're pretty good about.
They're pretty good about that, but I mean, just, I want to instill that in most of the streets in the commu, in the community, that's, we need to be aware of that.
Right, right.
Carry your bicycles, safety, I'm sure. We could add that here. Right. Right? Okay. Don't mind the face, it's always safe.
I'm making a motion to pass for resolution six seven nine?
Okay, second?
I'll second.
All right, Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Hi.
Doty?
Hi.
Meg?
Hi.
Okay, it's, uh, a little after seven, actually, we'll jump down to number eleven, public hearing, special use permit for one one twelve South Elm Street, John and Danielle Stangcross.
All right, so this is that proposed, uh, car wash on the lot that, uh, the city towardale the, the house across from Stangcross desk. So John and Danielle, um, are proposing a automated car wash, um, in that location, which is great. Um, they went through the zoning last night.
Daniel, yeah.
Okay. Um, I think you have the vote, did you go unanimous?
Yeah.
Ununanimous vote for that, so this is just, um, you know, public hearing for, are there any issues, you don't want?
Oh, maybe you don't want a car wash.
Yeah, don't want a car wash? I would like an automatic car wash, but.
Can I get a free one? I probably.
I don't know whether I need that one.
I can get a free one every day when I go to the police. Is there any way the police department can get free car washes? I'm kidding, we can't take it.
Right behind Courtney, I mean.
Not economics development, you are.
No, we'll pay for it.
The zoning board did approve the answer last night to recommend the destruction of it, it met all requirements setbacks, the only reason why it isn't SUP is because that's, it has to have an SUP because it's in the downtown district, is the only reason why I came forward.
Um, automatic, and then a outside bay?
Yep, yep, it's, just an automatic would be on the north side and then, uh, like an outside for larger vehicles that wouldn't, or dirty vehicles that need a little pre-wash before they go through the automatic.
Then you're gonna have a vacuum there too, right?
Yes, yes, of some sort. We're not sure, I don't know.
He's gonna stand outside and vacuum it all.
Well, not exactly.
Aren't they self-serving or not, uh, full service?
Um, maybe for free car washes, it's nice to stand right there. That's a whole different job of, I think.
No, I think it's a good project for the city, it's, it's something we don't have, um, that we could definitely use, and, um, I have heard no negatives about it, while we've been talking about it for the last three or four months, so.
So anyway, has to get a packet, you'll come in from the east off of Elm, you'll come through, go through the car wash, and then you'll take a left onto Locust, or south of Locust.
Yeah, yeah. Kind of thought back, that way we don't, that's a main street coming into play, we don't want people waiting on that.
Yep.
We'd rather have them come out on that than.
Yeah.
Plug up traffic on that intersection or anything like that.
Do you have a plan to go to the property west?
We've talked about it, yes, it would be beneficial to us.
Let's talk about it last night, too.
As long as it looks nice out my window, I don't care.
Well.
West property or the west property?
Yeah.
Yeah, the coast.
We're excited to have new business uptown?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, we're excited, we've been discussing it for probably longer than what we should have, the way, what we've heard from the community anyway, so.
I understand your competitor's not mad at all.
No, not at all, I think they're relishing the moment and.
Gives them a little opportunity to expand maybe out there too.
I, I think that's, that's what Rich was telling me, he was excited to be able to expand his business and have the space to do it. He kind of expressed a concern with the, his car wash is getting old, everything needed to be replaced and. So, yes.
Good way to work together.
Yeah.
How long, how long before it's, I mean, what, what's the timeframe we're looking at?
Yeah.
Just curi, I mean, I'm just curious.
On here it says start September twenty twenty three, finish spring twenty twenty four.
Right, yeah. Okay.
If everything would work right?
Depending on the weather, I'm saying.
It, yeah, if, depending on whether, right now it's ash offs, they would have to do the concrete for the building, and depending on when they would be able to after we get our tees crossed and kind of get everything. That's kind of a, and I know he, he said the building probably wouldn't go up until after it got cold out, but.
Sure.
If they could get the, uh, lace the cement down, that would keep it from going all the way into spring before we started anything. And I know the automatic equipment, there's a delay before we can get that, depending on when we finalize everything and order it.
Well, I'm excited, so, my husband is too. He might have to make a few decisions.
Okay, well, we have a public hearing, may I?
But, I, yeah, I, I need to make a motion to close public hearing. I make a motion.
I get that.
All right.
Aye.
Doty?
Hi.
Meg?
Hi.
Okay, we'll move to number twelve, and discussion.
Six.
What's that?
Ten.
Ten, you want to ten first? Do you want to be so kind, do you don't mind owning the land first?
Oh, yeah, we need to.
You did, you did the right way, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Yep.
Okay, number ten, discussion action ordinance number nine eight nine, sale of city-owned property at one twelve South Elm Street.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance nine eight nine?
I'll second.
All right, hey?
Hi.
Doty?
Hi.
Green?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
So she's gonna go from the second, third reading?
I'll make a motion to waive second, third readings.
Second.
All right, Doty?
Hi.
Meg?
Hi.
Green?
Hi.
Aye.
Okay, now we go to number twelve, right?
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, nice to meet you.
We're talking about someone else.
Okay, we'll go with number twelve then, discussion action approval of zoning board recommendation for special use permit, John and Danielle Stangcross, car wash, one twelve South Elm Street. Any more discussion?
I thought we already discussed it.
We didn't, you have a point, Gary, somehow we can.
We can make a motion.
I am making a motion that we do what we're supposed to be doing, what are we doing?
Approve the zoning board recommendation.
Prove the special use permit for the car wash for John and Danielle Stangcross.
I'll second.
Okay, Meg?
Hi.
Doty?
Hi.
Green? Tyler?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have a public hearing, may I?
I have to do my thing, get going.
So I spoke with Joey today, um, he apologizes, he had some dates wrong, and he submitted some wrong paperwork for, on his side, he would like to postpone everything. He wants to come back, redo everything, and have everything more organized for everybody to give him, um, a better view of it. Um, I told him, we had the zoning board meet last night, some weren't happy that they didn't have a chance for him to speak, he had some problems at work, and he said he wants to do it right and be here in person and take care of it, so he would ask to table it and start all over again next month, so we can see him and answer all his questions.
Okay.
Back up to number eight, discussion action resolution number six eighty, sale of Plainview manor, nineteen ninety-six Ford club wagon van.
Anybody wanting to keep it?
Well, it's been sitting for a couple of years now, and the more I, uh, try to use it for backup for resident use, or we've used it for laundry, um, it's now nickel and diming, you know, us to, because we just don't use it enough, you know, type thing, so it was purchased probably in nineteen ninety-six, it was twelve passenger, we do have, it's all handicap accessible yet. Uh, we do have the back bench that could be put back in there if somebody wanted to use it in that, that way, to, to the basement, but I think insurance last year costed me seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and we didn't use it, so I, I just think it's not used sitting there. Um, and our insurance renewal will be in September, so if we can move on it and, you know, somebody would purchase it, uh, Jeremy recommended going through Big Iron, you know, I don't have any problem with that.
Was it, was it wrote, I don't know what the resolution, sealed bid here in resolution? Yeah, it says sealed bid, that's what you told me, so that's what's put in here, sorry.
That's, I think, what, what Courtney called, that's what Cheryl had said, because she didn't know, because I was on the phone, I was on two phones at the time, actually, so.
Hopefully it's not used to seal dead then, yeah.
It doesn't matter to me, I mean, it just needs to get off my property.
Yep.
I'm gonna, okay, I'll make a motion to pass resolution six eighty?
I'll second.
Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Hi.
Doty?
Hi.
Meg?
Hi.
Do I just put something in the paper now, Jeremy, do, is that what I do?
Social rules.
Yeah.
A timeframe?
Uh, yeah, we'll be this resolution, let's, yeah.
So I have to give? How many days? Thirty days, two weeks, what?
It, it's optional for publishing in the paper, since the value is less than five thousand dollars, there, there could just be posted notice.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, physical posted notice around the community, so publication's optional.
And for how long, ship posted?
Uh, seven days before the sale.
There you go.
Pass the word. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number nine, discussion action ordinance number nine eight eight, interlocal agreement of the city of Norfolk for building inspection.
Do you all need to do this or you want to do it, Kyle? I mean, I can, I can touch base on it, but you spoke with Adam today, was that today or yesterday, if you?
Recently I spoke to the city attorney's office, so I, I think we kind of knew about this last time around. So there are different versions of this international property maintenance code, um, and, uh, the one that we purchased uh, was the most recent one, which is the twenty twenty-one. Unfortunately Norfolk uses the twenty eighteen version, so when I found this out, when I was putting these ordinances together, I asked them if they were gonna be updating anytime soon, so they could just update to where we were. Well, it sounds like they're gonna stick with the twenty eighteen for now, so now we gotta redo a, a little bit of, of work, but not too much, so. Nine eight eight is the agreement, uh, with, uh, the city in Norfolk, so that their, uh, city inspector can provide that building inspection service, uh, pursuant to that international property maintenance code. Um, so, section two of this ordinance basically provides, in our existing code, the, the city administrator is the official who's supposed to do all the inspecting. Well, obviously they're gonna be contracting that out, so I, I put it so that it's the city administrator or the city administrators authorize design meaning. Uh, so that gives us a little bit of flexibility, because then our local agreement is just with the city in Norfolk, so if the Norfolk code inspector changes, all Jeremy has to do is say, you know, I designate this new person with that, my field of duty, so we don't have to worry about gaps in coverage, so. That's basically all that section two of the ordinance says, is just, uh, makes a reference to a building inspector that can be the administrator or someone who designates. Um, and then, uh, uh, under section three gives Jeremy the authority to, to, uh, name that person. And then exhibit A to the ordinance is, uh, the interlocal agreement that, uh, Norfolk recommended, and as part of that, you'll see in there that we have to adopt the international property maintenance code in the same, basically, version as has been adopted by Norfolk, so that their inspector doesn't have to run that thing, maybe, he can just work off the existing framework that he's used to. Um, so we'll, we'll end up doing that next meeting, I believe the, the twenty eighteen version is then ordered, so then we'll have a, an ordinance to adopt the twenty eighteen in lieu of the, the twenty twenty-one, which we've already done, so. That's kind of the, the, uh, I guess, like I said, legal aspects of it, I don't know, Christie's got something on, uh, execution, unfortunately, that she would, sure.
I do, do I, can, do you want me to get up there or can I just sit here? That's a few minutes.
We can hear you.
Okay, so, um, the Ratliff property was supposed to be looked at today, however, because of the, the paperwork that we needed to complete legalities, was not able to be done. So Norfolk, the city of Norfolk has two council meetings, the first and third mon, uh, Monday of every month. So, before we found out that, you know, they're not going to adopt the two thousand twenty-one because it cost them thousands of dollars to do so to change the ordinance, um, Adam, the contractor that I'll be using, advised me that a lot of the language and verbiage in the, in the IPMC doesn't change much when it comes to unsafe or conden, condemning buildings, however, because we have to have a copy of the appropriate, uh, edition of the IPMC in office, we couldn't legally do that with, we've got twenty-one and they've got eighteen. So, um, if we were able to get it signed tonight, I could take the copy of the ordinance and the interlocal agreement to Adam, and they would put it on the agenda, consent agenda, and then they would approve it on the twenty-first. That would give us enough time to take care of that property at Norfolk, so then, West Pilcher, the one that's been a, a problem, but I don't know, Kyle, if we get it ordered, if we would have time to have them put it on their agenda, letting them know that we've got the two thousand eighteen version since their next council meeting is the twenty-first, and we wouldn't have to push anything back, because we've now had to push it back almost a month.
I, I think we'll be able to proceed with it, because.
Okay.
Wha, what, what we're, uh, adopting in nine eight eight tonight, if it would be adopted, is the agreement with Norfolk, and then we would commit back later in September and adopt the twenty eighteen version, so. They would have everything aligned, because in, in nine eight eight, the, the agreement attached to it says that we agreed to adopt the same code as that.
Okay.
So, we just commit to it, and then we finish it in September.
I have, I, sorry.
I say we might be able to, we might have a special meeting for public hearing and stuff beforehand, so we might have an extra meeting in between there, if we have time, so.
And I have everything lined up for that, that week in August to go and innovate and do if it, it needs to be condemned, to get it condemned, so. Um, I just have to make one more phone call with a, a city inspector for electricity, and, uh, Adam said the third week in August looks pretty good for him, if we can get everything signed and, and approved, so. That's what we're hoping for.
Discussion.
Do we have to agree on how many miles they're gonna go? Iowa's up to thirty-two, is it the same amount of miles?
It's twenty-nine point five miles from the edge, north edge of Norfolk to Plainview.
Is that what they would go by then?
I would think so, yes, if we paid, if we, they charge.
It doesn't matter where he lives or anything?
It's an extra couple of miles, right?
Well, it might be a dollar.
I'll give him a dollar. I think I got an extra one. Let me look at my sock here, I got more.
Like, like you're concerned.
And I'm like, how, what?
Pretty much. I guess we're not, we'll have to get it, but we gotta, you know.
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm Sarah Doty, and I actually know Adam Smith.
Okay.
Um, and he did say he's not the one who, um, rolls the contract out, but the mileage is kind of overboard, um, whoever wrote it, like, it's more than the average, just so you know.
What do you mean by that?
It's more than twenty-nine point five miles?
I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Well, I talked to the chief of police, and I'm friends with him in Norfolk.
Okay. Okay.
And we were discussing some mileage issues, and I asked him what the mileage was from the north side of Norfolk, the most north point to Plainview, and it's twenty-one point five, blah, 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 yeah.
He was just saying how the rate that they charge was higher, is what he said.
I'll talk to Adam, I'll reach out to Adam and discuss that with him, thank you though, I appreciate it.
More discussion? For a motion, then, for ordinance number nine eighty.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance nine eighty.
Second. Meg?
Hi.
Doty?
Hi.
Green?
Hi.
Tyler?
Aye.
Counsel wish to do with the second, third readings?
I make a motion to waive second, third readings, I'm by needing.
Second.
Second, aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Green?
Hi.
Doty?
Hi.
Meg?
Hi.
I think we're down to number sixteen. Discussion action approval of application and certificate for payment to PWS well number three sixty-two J. Three. PWS well number three sixty two W rehabilitation project, number three five one dash C one dash zero zero three, for six thousand dollars.
So this is the finishing up of our, of the well that we tried rehabilitating that up on, is on Fourth Street, we tried rehabilitating the well instead of, build a new one. Well, they cambered the well stem, and they, they came back and said, you highly advise, you don't continue to go on and keep paying, that's because it won't, it won't work, so. This is, this is just the sum of what, what's left for the work.
I think that was pretty nice of them.
Yeah, they, they come up forward and discharged us and said, well, it works great.
Yeah.
Motion approve application certificate for payment number two.
Second.
One second.
All right, Tyler.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Meg.
Aye.
Okay, number seventeen, discussion action approval, application and certificate for payment final number two. Street improvement districts twenty twenty one dash five, twenty twenty one dash seven, twenty twenty one dash nine for one hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-two cents.
So this is the final payment for those paving projects? Jeremy paid the four hundred and thirty-six, so this is seventy-nine dollars left.
Motion approve the application certificate for payment final number two on the street improvement district.
Okay, second.
A second.
Meg.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Okay, number eighteen, discussion action approval, change order number one. Street improvement districts twenty twenty one dash five, twenty twenty one dash seven, twenty twenty one dash nine for forty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-two cents.
So these are all the great rule additions that unfortunately happened, so when you break into the street, if we had an extra broken street on the edges, um, engineers got with us and talked to Kurt and I and see if, you know, if broken up, it doesn't work, or um, such as the intersection of Sixth Street, after they built the intersection, uh, they washed water flow, they had to extension of the pipes and everything to make it work properly, so. These are those little additions that came about to unfortunately increase the cost of project, which we assumed would be around, so.
Well, first of all, they're already done, so we have to pay it, but second of all, uh, you might just as well, I I appreciate them doing, fixing the problem while everybody's there, instead of having to always go back and undo it, so I do appreciate that.
They do give us that option, um, they call Kurt and I up there and go take a look at this, and go, if you guys really wanna fix this, you sure can, or we'd like us to do it right, so I guess we could have accepted to pay another concrete crew to fix it right, but it made sense to fix better, so.
They were really good with the orange, Jeremy.
Uh, they, too bad, we do have a little issue up on, um, Uglid, uh, it's a little higher than what it's supposed to be, if you think the street's high, it's because it was, it was, it ended up about six inches higher than what is engineer to be, um, there's a little water that runs actually into Kurt's driveway, into his yard, and they're gonna go in there and break out his, um, apron, and essentially pave about seventeen foot of his driveway to get the slope back, to push the water to make it go down the street. Um, other than that, there really wasn't any issues, we were able to, they reset all of our, uh, water stop boxes, all the manholes, they're all in good shape, we're able to get on them all, operate them all. So overall, it's, it worked out pretty decent, so, um, and Sixth Street, like I said, for, after all the rain and everything, um, I talked to Ryan Bone about it, he said it, it works great, for as weird a design as it is, it functions like it's supposed to, so.
Motion approve change order number one for the street improvements.
Okay, second.
Second.
All right, Tyler.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Meg.
Aye.
Okay, number nineteen, discussion action approval certificate of substantial completion. Street improvement districts twenty twenty one dash five, twenty twenty one dash seven, twenty twenty one dash nine.
So Bernie and I walked around, we, we did what I said, we made sure the valves all worked, and really, that was the only thing that they're gonna have to come back, so most of it is substantially completed, so.
Motion approve certificate of substantial completion for the street improvements.
Okay, sir.
Second.
All right, Meg.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Okay, number twenty, discussion budget twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
Uh, you can skip that, you wanna go to the other ones.
Question action, resolution number six eight one, purchase of police vehicle.
So there's not actually a resolution, this is kind of gonna go into budget two, but I'll, we'll work it while we're here. Um, so Christie and I have been talking about the police budget and their equipment that they have, and the necessities that they need. Um, really comes out to be, we, we did some checking around our law enforcements, and a lot of them usually keep their vehicles between eight, nine years, depending on miles, hours, service, problems, any of that, so back, when our last vehicles were bought, we bought them both back to back, so we run a seventeen and eighteen model. Um, talking with Christie, we usually don't have the finances just to drop fifty, sixty thousand dollars on our vehicles, right, like some, some other public entities do. So we'd like to, they always have it on loan, so we'd like to spread them out, so are we in absolute need of, of a police vehicle right now? No, but to try getting our spread where we want to be, we'd like to be a little shorter on this one, and then unfortunately, if we keep both of them, um, Christie'd be a little longer on hers to keep the distance spread out, so we can kind of keep rotating vehicles, we're trying to get into a path where we can, we can be on a good rotation for for quality vehicles, we don't wanna have to double them up every year and have two, two home bands on them, um, so I think that's kind of what we're looking at, um. Uh, we've looked at Dodge Durango, uh, I've been talking with Corso Auto, they don't go out for bids until, or they don't come back with the pricing here until another week or so, so we didn't have a resolution. Um, we were hoping they'd come back, but they haven't. Uh, base price on a V six Dodge Durango, it was about forty-one thousand, and then there's some additions with some police packages, such as radio design setup, um, skid plate, council, some things like that, yeah, so we look forward to, they to come back here next week or so, and then we'll kind of re-talk about it, if you guys are interested in moving forward or not, um, so I just kind of wanna throw it out there, so you guys can think about it, talk about it. Um, but that's really kind of where, where Christie was thinking about with her, with her, uh, vehicles, so. Um, the reason why we didn't go back to the Ford Explorers, because they no longer make police package Ford Explorers, they discontinued them. Um, she really wasn't feeling like the pickup was gonna be something that she absolutely needed in town, um, and then cars not really, and I don't blame her. Not really in the car thing, so the other, the only other SUV that was pretty adequate, other than electric one, which went on plugins everywhere, was, was the Dodge Durango, so they're actually gonna stop making the Dodge Durango as well, but they had enough, I guess, leftover material, that they're gonna do one more bit of it for twenty twenty four, so we'd be able to, um, access the bidding in sometime, hopefully by the end of August, and then they should be starting to build next spring, so. Kind of starting out, this will be really the first step to see if we wanna budget forward and, and move forward on it, so I'm not asking you to move forward on now, um, but I'll wait till we get, obviously, a price back for it, but I just want you guys to think about it and see if that's something that you guys are interested in.
What do you do with police vehicles then, Big Iron, or do you trade it?
I would like, if you don't mind, I would like to keep
Oh, that's why we got a Dodge Durango.
Then, there was a situation where Andrew's vehicle kind of took a dump on him, so he, he would, he told me, and I got my stuff out of my vehicle, and he, he drove mine. And then we'd be swapping, so if we could have one, just until mine came up, like a couple of years after we get his, that way I'd have a backup in case mine took a dump on me for a while, and then once we go through getting possibly mine, we can do like we did with the Tahoe, and, uh, put it on Big Iron.
She'll probably end up keeping hers a little longer than the year, so we can get adaptation.
Right.
So if we have to, if something does happen to hers, you know, years won't be long, that, we'll have something backup right now, so. And if we get on a nice schedule of every so many years, then we could, yeah, we should have decent vehicles all the time, not have to worry about.
Nine over the nine, but no to six.
Yeah.
Right, and, like,
If it makes sense, price wise, budget wise.
The radar in mine is going out, um, so if we just piece it together, like get a new radar installed in my vehicle, I can run it with the equipment that I have, and then when I do get my new vehicle, I can take all my equipment out of that and just transfer it over. Because we ended up putting it on Big Iron anyway, so.
Where are they going to then, after the Dodge Durango, that's?
That's a good question.
Where they, what are, who's, what are people going to?
Is anybody gonna?
Uh, a lot of them are going to electric, because that's, they're really pushing electric vehicles for the bigger miss valleys, um, such as like, uh, like New York, all them, so they're going to either pickups, they're going to cars, and they're going to electric.
Both of them, electric, like the pickups and the cars?
Yep, there is some, there are some gas pickups out there, the gas picks are still available, but not any, uh, other, I don't think we've seen any other SUVs that were non-electric.
We had that, yeah, that's, you know, um, I know that county just got a new pickup, but the only reason they were able to fall into this police package is because somebody backed out of that bid, so they were able to get one that was already put together. Um, Ford gave up their contract for about a year, I think, so they won't even be available till two thousand twenty-five. Um, definitely don't wanna go electric, I mean, hell, get a bike and ride a bike before I do that, but, I mean, seriously.
We'll get you a ped.
It's, it's surprising how, how many police packages are going electric, other than the pickups, I mean, there's some electric pickups out there, but a lot of them are, pickups still gas, but, I don't know.
Electric for you in town though would work, I mean, it's not, it wouldn't be that bad.
Well, until like, you have to like, if you have to go like EPC, end up going to Carney and driving.
Sixteen hours, right?
Yeah.
So. So.
But still around town, it would be good.
If you have a plug in.
So like choices for driving on the cars.
Do we have a plug in here, Tim?
Oh, yeah.
I am talking to NCPP about getting a couple electric charging stations, the issue though is that a full charge takes like three hours.
Mm-hmm.
It's like, who has that kind of time, and like?
Well, I don't, when I gotta go to the domestic, I don't have a charge that hard.
Yeah, and then a rapid charge is like, is like thirty or forty-five minutes, but you only get like a fourth of the mileage, you know, that you would normally get, so it's just, I don't know, and then finding a place to put it, because if you're gonna have to park for three hours, it better be something around for you to do, so.
Well, we also have to put them in our homes, in our houses, if we're gonna plug them in, because, you know, are we gonna, and, and you guys might say, just take a personal car down to the police station, which I guess, but, I mean, uh.
It's not in the budget yet, so, carry on.
Collection of the Durango.
I'll park it, I'll park it at your house for a while.
Yeah, plug in.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably talk about that, obviously, we'll, uh, talk early, later on about the budget, but we'll talk about, we can talk about that again, I just wanna get you guys thinking about it, and have some thought on that, so.
Does it matter which dealership you go to, as long as you put it a bid in, does it matter if you're like Crowder's or, or in the skirts, the same, if it's one of the?
No, I, I don't have that.
Yeah, that's my question, is there another dealership that we can? We can go to State also.
We can sure call around, I was just.
Columbus has a Dodge dealership.
O'Neil.
O'Neil has one.
Yep. I'm more, yeah, I was more putting this out, we can definitely call around if you guys are interested, we can call around to any local Dodge dealership you want.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
And I don't know if they all get the same bid or not, I don't, that's a good question, whether it's a state package or?
I guess, I don't know, I worked at a dealership, but I don't know about, we've only had like one
State bid, yeah.
State, you know, one bid for a police vehicle, so.
I could probably even ask that guy if that, I hope he does.
He won't tell you.
I'll call you, I'll call different Dodge dealership. Yeah, one on.
Uh, Columbus Motor Company, Crowder's, O'Neil.
Oh, Crowder's, absolutely.
We always stick at ours from Carney, I mean, it was a government discount, so it's probably not the same, but.
Yeah. Both in.
In Barfield County.
Yeah, yeah.
Just put that out there, I have the same question, so.
Okay, all right, number twenty-two, discussion action barricades on Woodland Avenue between King and Pine Street. Designated walkway during school hours for temporary classrooms at library and method.
Okay, so this was brought to my attention, I mean, Jody came talking to me and some other people did too, um, yes, it's not a responsibility to cone the street for when the school's gonna be walking their kids, but do we want to, because obviously we sure can, just for any extra safety, for vehicles not veering off and towards that driving lane, and for the kids, maybe to, to keep them along the curb. Um, so we were talking about it, we could do multiple different things if we so choose, um, we could put the lineers along there, obviously we gotta keep the driveway open, um, but we could, we could really kind of narrow that up to a four-foot walkway in there. Um, I had, I did tell, uh, Arl that we would be here talking about this today, um, I said if we had them have them removed or something, if the council decided, you know, I spoke with Gail, and he thought they could find somebody to move them in the morning and night, um, if we do just delineers or whatever, he told me it could be as short as two weeks before, once they use them, I said, well, we could probably just leave them up full time, especially if they're only four foot over. Um, so it's really up to, up to you guys, if we want to cone that street, so everybody will know that their additions are on, um, so we're just putting it out there for, I guess, discussion.
I know we're short on time, but didn't we talk about site?
We're not.
It's never gonna happen in two weeks.
No, I know, I know, but, but.
We, yes, we did, but with Walt passing and everything that's happened, it just hasn't gotten.
Okay, we can't, yeah, I, I spoke to Walt personally, and then he went, yeah.
Okay, no, I couldn't remember where we left off.
I mean, if we start off with whoever, end up with the estate.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I hope you're not thinking that's what happened.
No, no, that's why I said short time, I just couldn't remember where we ended.
Yeah, because I asked Jeremy that too, when I talked to him.
I said, I didn't wanna kind of jump on after the passing of her.
Yeah.
And they got some other stuff to deal with.
Um, so.
I just wanna make it as safe as possible for the kids, I know that we're not the school, but I feel that as a community, we need to make an effort to make it safe for the kids to walk to and from.
Well, I like the, what do you call those things, those tall ones that have a whole top?
Luminaries.
Dilators?
I think so, I could be wrong.
I, that, and you talked about maybe putting out, you know, a plastic, uh, chain looking thing.
We could probably put those white chains that they sell in there, I mean, kids will be pulling on them, but.
Yeah. I think it, you know, the kids look at it, this is a fun place to walk through, maybe, instead of, and some people that drive too fast, and they might notice that they shouldn't be on that side of the street.
I'm just thinking, kidder hunters are like herding cats.
Yeah.
So anything to get them to stay in the area and go where they need to go would be helpful.
Sidewalk by the library looks nice, by the way.
Yes, it does.
We made sure that was down at the forehand, so.
How many times do they have to be walking back and forth again?
Uh, minimum of four, um, up to six or eight.
Do we know a schedule, what time of day, like, do we have, mm, before school and after school for sure?
Okay. Lunch.
Lunch.
And then possibly if we have an activity or after somewhere, or whatever.
But if you put in there, at least it's, it's a visual, right?
Yeah, that's a good idea. That's what Jody and I talked about, it's not, I mean, do we have to, absolutely not, I'm sure the teachers and parents can hopefully get them all straight line and up, but I guess if it makes, even if it's for peace of mind for people, it might be a good thing.
And it's not for everything.
No.
And, now, there's two of us, we can also patrol that a little bit more too, I mean, not really be a problem, at least morning, lunch, evening.
But, is there still a little lane though, from the school to the library that was put in years ago, like a white stripe, and tried the sidewalk, but there was a couple homeowners that didn't wanna give it up, I mean, have we ever thought about going back and making that actually like a little bit more
It's, it's still there.
visual, you know, there's a lot of examples where you can use different colors of paint to really make that stand out, if that's, the, if that's the compromise, right, since we can't get the full sidewalk thing, because it's very blind, you know, and if you're not actually from this community, you would just never even really notice it was there.
We paint yellow every, every year, right before school starts.
I mean, like, have you seen, like, they, they paint like different kinds of patterns in them, to really, and then we use reflective paint, um, red, yellow, white, it really makes it stick.
The only sad part is that now that we have parking there, we can't park, we can't paint it, because then it'd be like a no parking zone either, and now, so they park in there after the hours.
Who parks there?
We changed the parking there.
Anybody who wants to, I don't know.
Well, anyone, they won't now with them.
With them cones, I know it'll be inconvenienced for, uh, two, four weeks.
Or tell, tell the rookie it's done.
I'm, I must kill them, so, when they have activities.
Yeah, yeah, and then we talked about that too, we have to pretty much get a car and cart them off somewhere, because you don't wanna be putting them in people's yards, it might be, you know, upset about killing them, and and they'd be willing to do that too, uh, maybe we, I think Gail would be willing to, if we wanna put them out on Mondays and pick them up on Fridays, if the weekend open, maybe something like that. I spoke to them, he said he was really willing, actually, his wife would even volunteer, be willing to help out, however they could.
Even if you would just take the little cones that are easy to pick up and take down, and just put them every so often on that walkway, I think that would be enough, and that would be easy enough for somebody to move if they have games or something, the Masonic Temple has stuff going on, they can be moved.
So if we wanted to do that and, and remove them every day, um, Cheryl Selena, actually, she told me she would volunteer, so the school generally do it, she would volunteer to pick up and put out cones every day. We might have to buy her a cart, so she doesn't carry them all.
Oh, yeah.
As we probably have it too, so, if that's what we wanted to do, that's fine.
I think, so, just a little cone, just so it's a little bit of a visual for not only people driving, but also the kids to know where they're supposed to stay. I'm, I just don't think it's gonna hurt. Have you guys seen those kids walk after school in the library, like with no cones and that paint, like, paint is a good idea, but they look at it and they're like, hmm, I can cross that line, and they do. So I think a cone.
I think it's more for the drivers, because just, it's, it's very blind.
They cross that line too, so I'm just.
And when we talk to them about it, we're gonna, right now, that one's a lot wider, that area, we're actually gonna narrow it up close to the curb, so it doesn't affect actual traffic. So we'll really, we'll make a shorter, narrower walkway for the kids as well.
And people may stay away from that area too, knowing the, the, what's happening, you know what I'm saying, like, people avoid, well, I'll tell you what, I don't see much,
All of common sense.
I don't see much traffic on Woodland during the daytime until drop off and pickup. I don't see much traffic on Woodland during the daytime until drop off and pickup.
Yeah, that's gonna be.
That, seriously, I don't, and I think people will realize that those kids will be hopefully walking, and they just avoid it as much as possible, so.
So do we need to make a motion or something here?
You sure can, make sure they're, yeah, exactly, I'd like, I really could be on your swastika direction of what you guys actually wanted from us, or if you wanted anything from us, really, I mean, we're, we're willing to help, but I didn't know.
Do we have cones? I mean, is it something that we're gonna have to go purchase? We have some.
We have cones.
We have cones.
Okay, so it's not something that's gonna cost us anything, other than maybe a cart for Shelley?
And if we need, and if, if we need some more, if we need some more cones, we always use them, they always get destroyed. Kids will try stealing them, they get run over, so it's not like we're, we're not gonna have too many cones at the scene, so it's not a big deal for us.
Maybe you have kids in the grades that are gonna be walking down here, what are your feelings on putting up a cone? I didn't say anything, I said putting up the cones. I didn't ask anything else.
Um, yes, the cones are a must needed.
Okay.
Yeah, so I have a special interest, obviously you gave me this too, though, I can see where I got.
I have two of them, I get one of both.
Meredith Exton, um, yeah, no, I, yeah, cones are a must. How about hotwired?
Muscle memory. I'm kidding, 'cause I.
Oh, it's wire up there.
I'm not gonna tell one, I'm not gonna sell you out, man, I just heard that was funny, so.
Oh, I guess I'll make a motion to put out or use cones to barricade on Woodland between King and Pine Street, uh, during school hours, if Shelley's willing to volunteer.
Yep, she told me she would, so you want to take it up and put down every day then?
I would prefer.
Okay.
Um, I mean, 'cause otherwise we're gonna end up with high school kids stealing them and everything else.
Sure.
As long as Shelley's okay with it, Shelley and Gil, it shouldn't be for very long, right? That's what we've been told? Right?
Optimistically.
Okay, so, thank you, that's, that's my motion. I'll second.
All right, Todd.
Aye.
Reeve.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Meg.
Aye.
Thank you guys so much, it's good to see the city and the school work together for what's best for the kids.
Great idea, great idea. Number twenty-three, discussion action advertised for full-time maintenance position.
Okay, so I have to put this on here late, I just found out that, so Chris Mann is gonna be looking for a different position. Um, his partner, 'cause him and her are gonna move together going forward. So he, he was nice enough, he came in, he let me know, he's like, I can't tell you exactly when, but I'm looking for jobs, I know he had a job interview today even. So it could be as short as two weeks, it could be as long as a month and a half. Uh, I would, I would assume the job market probably won't last very long, he probably won't be around very much longer. Um, it's great for him, I, I graduated him, I mean, he's moving on, um, he's found a, um, yeah, wholesome kids to go live with and move his life forward, so. Um, he was nice enough, gave us a heads up before a two-week notice, so. Um, I know for us, we advertise it, it's gonna be thirty-some days at least, by the time we interview, it could be up to two months before we can find, you know, even a hire, so. Guess I'm looking for a motion to, um, advertise for the position, to make this position.
I saw move, you know, you gotta have some people working it.
Well, yep, I'm hoping so.
So I've moved it to advertise as necessary.
I'll second, Courtney.
Okay, Tyler.
Aye.
Reeve.
Aye.
Jody.
Aye.
Meg.
Aye.
Number twenty-four, council comments.
Uh, I'll go back to council, I'll budget real quick. Um, I don't exactly have a whole lot yet, um, we've been pretty busy on some other, um, meeting and boards that I get roped into. Um, but anyway, here is just, I just give you guys a list, the rundown of our ten-page report we put out, this just came out. Um, Corey's printed out today, this is the newest version, it's not even on the internet yet, but it will be, as soon as we go over it and make sure things are in spot. Um, I'd like you guys just to really start looking over this. Um, if you look under the budget, so if you look at the top part, where it says fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and then it goes over to the budget, and then fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and anybody can look at this, this will be on the internet, and our last month's is. You look at, under budget, you look at total, that's our total budget items from last budget season. You look at remaining, it's pretty simple, that's what we haven't spent or haven't income yet. And then you can look over, if you go to the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three to the left, you look at the current, that's this month. And then if you go to the year-to-date under twenty-two, twenty-three, that is our total year-to-date. And so that's, that's how you read that. The other percentage used, you can, that's just percent of what we budgeted. And then, um, if you really wanna look back into the year previous to see where things changed, you can look into fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, this is really what we, or how I present our budget, uh, it's been a little different from before I got here, but this is really how I present our budget. Um, you get a full look at last year, this year, where we're sitting currently, so literally we have two months left of our fiscal year, our fiscal year's October one. Um, so you can look in there on incomes and everything, you look like at our water income, our sewer income, um, we actually did a pretty good job budgeting, we're, we're about right on track, so. Um, you can really go through there and see, um, and see where we sit. Some of them are off, 'cause we, either we allocated in a different spot, or there was something that came up that cost us more, or we made more for some reason. Um, but I would ask, before we, uh, before we get on budget, to really go through this and get a good grasp on it. Um, and then I'll probably be emailing you guys some days coming up for an actual budget workshop, where we can sit down and really hash everything out. Um, we'll probably have one special one yet before our next September meeting, and then we'll have one after that September meeting, really to, to move forward and not finalize it, but before we probably go to, um, the special public hearing that we have for the county. So it'll probably be two budget hearings before we're, or meetings before we, we'll decide, so. And if you have any questions, or anybody from the community has any questions looking through that, come talk to me, we can talk about anything and everything, so. That's what I want for that one. And some of the, you look at the bottom numbers like that, you're gonna be skewed. So we did budget for, for, uh, we budget long for if we do collect any grants or anything that comes from the city, like DTRs and things, so. The end numbers are not gonna be like, oh my gosh, we didn't bring all that money in, well, you're right, 'cause we didn't get a million dollar budget, and oh my gosh, we didn't spend that as well, so. The, the end numbers, I know Tyler's like, what if we do, they are not gonna be.
I think that's a big number of grants he's spending.
Yeah, yeah, no, there, there is.
Yeah, I was like, Jeremy, what are you doing?
We're preparing to let us grow.
Like, is that what we're doing?
That's pretty catchy though, isn't it? It was right off the top of my head.
You better quit signing up.
There you go, thank you.
Very good.
Okay, now, twenty-four, council comments, anybody have anything?
She's been talking the whole time.
They are.
That's what I'm here for.
Uh, no, that's what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Card.
Yeah.
Number five, public comments, anyone from the public have a comment on anything?
Putting on my public hat. Um, I got a phone call from, um, a, a couple residents in town, um, they contacted me through my role as the secretary of the PDCF, um, about the multi-court project in the park, um, they knew that, you know, as part of that fundraising and, and wrote the grants for it. Um, they were very upset about the condition that the courts are in. They said that the lights haven't worked for a month and a half, so you can't use it at night, and it's just kinda junky in there, nothing's really been cleaned out all summer. Um, they did say that they have reached out to someone at the city, I didn't ask who, um, that they said it would be fixed, and as of last weekend, it still hadn't been fixed, so they were still pretty upset about it, so. I don't know, you know, if those pool kids are looking for another job, we can maybe clean up the courts, I don't know, but.
I don't know about the conditions inside, I guess, but I knew the lights, we are working on that, so there's some, we, some electrical problem, we tried out new breakers and stuff, but I'll be back on that. Lights, I know, the other stuff I will look into.
I know the nets, one of the nets got smoked by that windstorm we had, so that was leaning up against the south side of the, you know, court itself. I was on the court a couple weeks ago, and it looked presentable and okay to me.
Okay.
But I think the lights, yeah, like Jeremy said, I mean, I, I hope so.
I mean, I personally haven't, I mean, literally last time I was in there was the day we did the ribbon cutting, like, I don't have little kids anymore, I've never, I haven't been in, I have no idea, but.
You can play pickleball.
But, uh, there were a lot of people.
Well, like, eight miles out of town, my husband's not coming for that, but, um, if the net is bad or something like that, I mean, the PDCF, you know, we raised the money for that, and, you know, if, if there was some ongoing maintenance or something, I would just, you know, ask us as a board, and I think we could buy new nets, but we, we just wanna make sure that, it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar project, we just wanna make sure that after one year, it still looks good, so. That's it.
Had a visitor at the Pond Island Museum, he brought his grandsons over from Clearwater, 'cause he likes the color of that tenth court. They played, and it was like ninety, ninety percent humidity out.
That's good to hear, 'cause I've heard a lot of comments about like, who picked the colors, it's so loud, I'm like, you didn't notice how bad it was before, it was pretty good to me.
We see it used at night, part of the lights going down a lot. Um, just over the past weekend, there were a lot of people using it for pickleball and basketball, so it's getting used, it's gonna, yeah, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I used to drive by one at the tennis court, and there was, it was just nothing, and now you see, there's always kids in there.
Always, yeah.
But if there's so, if there is some issue, just let the PDCF know, and we will buy something else or fix it up or, but.
Or we'll tell Jeremy to do it.
There you go, I'm on it.
I have a question.
You have a question.
I have a question. Um, I see you guys do claims and payroll and stuff, where's your treasurer's report?
Our packets, or are we getting an email to us? So if you see me like, open up my packet for the first time, I already seen it on email.
So is that, um, I guess I'm confused, 'cause I think you're supposed to take action on the treasurer's report also monthly.
Oh, it's just done, claims and payroll.
municipality. There are some municipalities that do have, uh, a treasurer's report, I don't know if there's a statute or a requirement for it, 'cause the, the information is in the claims and payroll, so. We kind of look at it.
It all sort of together.
I don't think that there's a separate, uh, position for, I rapped on that.
Yeah, I've never seen one for.
Other towns do it differently, here it goes through like, item, like, line by line, I mean, it takes up most of their agenda.
But Courtney's always good about talking to anybody that has questions.
It's on my thing.
It's in your packet.
And cream.
And it's, and it's accessible on the internet too.
The whole packet's on the internet, so.
And we get together.
With the treasurer's report on.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we get together on a lot of things.
We don't argue all the time.
Most of the time, they're not on time.
It's all there in black and white, no matter what it's called. Income and debts. Call it a treasurer's report or a claims, payroll. But it's all in there, it's all online too.
Does that help you?
Yeah, I, I looked online for your packets, and it was still July, so I just put it up yesterday.